I enjoy everybody's awareness. Switch us over to the panel. Yeah, can that wait water? No problems.
You're unmuted.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you.
Hi Theresa, Jim Kane, can you hear me?
Hi Jim, yes, I can hear you.
Alright. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. We begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I'd like to first begin by a roll call of Jim Kane.
Present.
EJ Bell.
Present.
Samantha Peterson.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
And Trevor Durski.
Present.
Thank you everyone. First order of business is to approve the agenda, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
We need to, we need to strike the financial reports.
Should we do that now or do we do that?
Theresa, do we have the financial reports at all tonight?
No, I'm gonna give you a verbal report, but there's absolutely nothing in writing, so we don't know if they prefer to do.
Okay. Make the motion to strike it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Preferably, yeah. If they're in the agenda and we're approving them, then we should have them. So you have motion to strike the financial reports.
I also make a motion to adjust number five to a fact finding rather than approval of anything until we get information and able to research that information.
I'll second all that.
Is there?
Was there a motion? Who would like to make a motion?
Well, I think we're, we're gonna go through some information, aren't we?
Did Trevor make a motion to amend the agenda?
Correct.
Well, I'm just saying, should we just keep the number five as it is and have a discussion and then at that time we can decide to table it if you think you need more, Dave, or not?
I'd still like to be able to think about it and I'd just like to find out more information about it and not make a decision tonight.
Are there any, are there any deadlines to that, Bruce, or?
Um, no. Now we have to change some things around. Let's see here. You can get Doug on the, on the call if you'd like before number five maybe. But we have a motion by Kane to approve.
Jim, would you like to change your motion or recall your motion? To approve and then we can redo the motion for removing item C? Item three C?
I don't I, I don't like, I guess I don't understand. There's a motion to approve and there was no second. Trevor wants to amend it. So the motion dies for lack of second.
Okay.
And then Trevor wants to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Alright, well, I guess I'll call for a second and I'll let it die at that point. Here we go, second, motion dies. Okay, now we go on to is there a motion to approve the agenda with changes to move items three C?
And also five, having any discussion, or it's just purely discussion and not approval?
Well, I think
That don't make sense. Item five is on. We, we get there and we don't wanna make, we don't have to vote on the resolution. We can change it as that time, we can, the only thing we can do is either remove item five or leave it in there and then work on it when we get there.
You can do anything you want. It doesn't make sense. It makes sense that I don't wanna make a decision tonight. And you could disagree with that. But it does make sense.
Well, yeah, I, I'm good with the page. Prefer to, to get more, to have more of a discussion, to understand what, what it, what all is in number five, cause I mean, I, I read through the documents, I think I understand, but I've had some more concern, this feel like maybe in addition to something we've already talked about or, or change to it maybe somehow, so. However, we gotta get that done, I, I agree.
I agree that that's open, but we have to get to item five in order to do any changes to it. And when we're on the agenda, we can either add or subtract from the agenda. Once we get to the agenda, then we get down to item five, we can discuss how we want to proceed, we do not have to pass or fail a resolution, we can table it or turn it into a discussion or whatever we want, but at this point, all we can do is
So I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to remove A, C, D, and E. I'm just trying to find out intervention. If we move them, we won't be able to talk about them, so.
Whatever's under five, right?
Right. And at that time, once we discuss it, we don't have to act on it, we don't have to pass or fail resolution, but we've gotta get there before we can discuss it.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, I think, which is why that procedure we want to follow. I think we all generally agree and support Dave's, Dave's request to have a discussion about it, have some time to think about it, and then take action later.
Okay, so we're gonna remove, again, motion is to remove items five A, B, C, D, and E, really, it's all thing. And
It's, it's, it's focus on discussion and
Looking fact finding.
Consensus, right, to not make a decision.
So we could just
For the record, it would be
Keep item five still, just remove the resolutions?
Sounds up. What we can proceed with is removing five A, B, C, D, and E.
We could still be able to bring us through the, the information out of the package? And hopefully we can maybe find out what, what information we're looking for in addition to what you've already provided specifically? Can we still have all of that?
Sure, we'll do, we'll do the discussion under number five or whatever. Could be the items we have back in motion. So, again, we have a motion to remove items three C, five A, B, C, D, and E. Clear everyone? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, here we go, none, the roll call, this is Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Name.
Moving on to the consent agenda, it's approving I should say, motion carries. Remove the city council minutes of January fourteenth, the regular and special sessions, list of bills for approval. Item three C is struck. Got a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just so you know, I'm going to be a no vote. Not that I don't wanna pay for items that we purchased. But I was a no vote on the new pickup truck and that's part of these bills, therefore I'm, I'm voting no, and, and the reason that, again, I just wanna re, reaffirm this. Having one new truck and having now a second new truck and having a third truck and being paying for all of those and then you basically, day one, you've lost money on the thing and we have to maintain now three pickup trucks just doesn't make sense to me. So, that's why I'm gonna be a no vote.
Further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Name.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Jay Bell.
Name.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number four. Resolution authorizing and approving a certain loan agreement providing for the issuance of two millions, seventy-five thousand dollars in raw obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two, twenty twenty-five, and approving the levy of taxes to pay. This is the last vote of our bonding issuance. And all the letters and endorsements and everything have been emailed. So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the loan agreement.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Motion is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving on to item number five, this discussion renewed on the urban renewal area, first owned by development LLC. This is continuation of the work that was begun in October. Many product spreadsheets and things like that to show the revenues and where they stand in the urban renewal agreement is the summary of all the amount spent and things like that, so. Are there any questions at all on the urban renewal area agreement? I guess, we can also get a list of your questions and have Maggie represent us.
So the agenda said that we're resolution deleting parcels from the urban renewal area.
I think the way I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there were two duplex units, so four units included in the, the first TIP district, the commercial TIP district. And you were explaining to me today that those residential lots had to get pulled out, or can you, can you explain to the council what you explained to me today?
The, the map that was included in the packet. I don't have a copy from me. But basically what that is, is there are four units, four housing units.
Single development, single
But they're parcels, four parcels. Those parcels are presently included in a urban renewal area that is for commercial development. Because the funding for that is for commercial development, those housing, those residential units, and their valuation cannot be used, their products cannot be used without the commercial area because they're residential. So what Maggie has proposed is to, is to basically move those four units, those four parcels, to the, the new urban renewal area, the TIP district. And use them, use that value for commercial, residential TIP. So that in nutshell is still not. And the reason for it, how that benefits the whole plan, as Maggie explained, is that it's payback time. So the project would be paid more quicker and
We'll get the TIP money back and then ask residential, whereas it's, it was originally run out commercial and it's not commercial now. We authorized the building, so we won't get the TIP on the commercial anyway. And that's a different rate than it is on residential.
We would not use that residential valuation on the TIP. On the TIP for commercial. Reasons around that. So that's what this June is, explained in the map, was to show that we're removing four parcels from one TIP area and moving them to the new TIP area that is adjacent for the project. So, that's where we're not deleting anyone's land or anything like that, this is like a boundary.
Those houses are already built by moving them into the new
Jim, oh, I'll let you So those, but we're not removing anyone's property, not changing anybody's taxes or anything. It's a description of a boundary of an area that defines the valuation that can be used in that.
So you're saying these four lots here?
Right, those four parcels, yeah. Just like in, if you look in the legal description.
And there's already duplexes on that
This, or the, the legal effort we have here is not to build it, not to build any houses, it's just on the areas that can be applied to to valuation in that area for that project. We're defining a project which is
Aren't those the only lots in that block, you know?
Yeah.
Where are those?
Those, those four parcels are just part of the entire
Is, is the rest of that block developed?
Again, we can get hung up on what's built and what isn't. It's a boundary around parcels.
So what was this, I see the four in there, and then it's got the total of them all, where everybody else could see this. The four houses right, or the four, the two duplexes that are right there are what we're talking about, what we just talked about. Then there's this that's involved now, that So what does, what does that tell me that?
I, I don't really know if I'm gonna explain it correctly, but the way I understand it, so that those four parcels were included in the commercial TIP district, but we, we wouldn't benefit from residential being included in that commercial TIP district, so Maggie's suggesting that we move those four parcels into the residential TIP district that we discussed in, was it October? And that would benefit this new TIP district because the duplex is already built, so there is already valuation being built, is that, am I understanding that correctly? That's the benefit to moving these four residential parcels from the commercial area into this new residential?
Yes, in a nutshell. It doesn't matter that they're built or not, it just
No, I, I understand that, but moving it from the the first, you know, the first TIP district, the urban renewal, into what we just approved, which would be a residential. So we
Well, he would, he would add it to the, the final, final section February twenty-fifth would be to adopt the the new urban renewal area, which is in the document we sent.
Yes.
Urban renewal plan amendment, February twenty twenty-five. That whole red outlined area would be the seven acres plus, in the back of the amendment, it says the first seven acres and parcel over parcel over parcel over parcel. That's it. Urban renewal plan in the urban renewal area. For every, all the TIP we have in Atkins, we have a plan that is described, and we file at the state law and the, and the county auditor. And that's what we're oriented towards creating that, that project plan.
So what was this? This was not part of a TIP district at all?
Correct.
So
No. You were preparing to do all this work.
But that was the, that was the area that we were discussing.
Was that going to be?
All of this, all of this area was discussed in October under that project that Maggie taught me.
It was for the low to medium income outfit?
Not, no. Low to moderate, the LMI set aside are funds that will be set aside in a fund for LMI, it's called.
That was a requirement, that one.
It's a requirement of law.
But the whole area wasn't going to be a
Correct, yep. The entire area is a market break and the market break housing is infused in evaluations that Maggie provided. So anyway, that's
Why only those four units and not point out more of them?
Uh, because the others, all the others are not in the commercial.
Okay, these were, these were set aside as commercial, the other, the other eight of those block was already in residential TIP. That was because of the land across the street to the north, we were planning on that corner going commercial?
Well, but just describing what the, what the action is is to take those four parcels like the documents say, and the seven acres, more or less in that legal description of that area. To create a urban renewal area, which is the area that has to be defined as such.
And then you can This is the confusing part I have. Remove parcels in the red box from the existing urban renewal project and then we're adding them back in, and I understand that it was commercial because we were going to build probably four complexes, is that right?
No. The commercial is to the west of there. Again, you're, you're taking it from one one urban, one area and you're just legally defining it to be this new area.
So when you say, when you say existing urban renewal area, the area you're talking about is the commercial lots to the west? That's the, so taking them from that exists, so I'm looking at this the red box with all, you know, the four parcels. So when you, when he says existing urban renewal area, it's that commercial? You know, where, where they're building the new coffee shop or whatever, and all this commercial lot, one of the two
That's up here though, that's up here.
Those lots right there, right to the left of the red box are, are zone commercial, they're in that, that urban renewal So that would be the existing urban renewal area that these four residential parcels did, or belong to now. But what Maggie's suggesting is that we remove those four residential parcels from the existing urban renewal area and add them to the area that we discussed in October.
But it doesn't show anything over here as
It, it
In that's red.
He doesn't have a box around it, but that would be the area that's the existing urban, right? He just outlined the four residential areas.
But then you go down here and then you read this and it says delete the areas and add this right here. And it doesn't have those lots in there.
They are, and these four residential lots are now included in the seven acres that we discussed in October. So the first picture, I'm sorry, I've been talking over you.
No.
The first picture with the box just around the four parcel residential, that, he's just describing what is going, what Maggie is suggesting, we move away from the existing urban renewal and then.
Understood, but your.
The box here, it, it now includes the seven acres plus those four residential areas.
Understood, but you're, this is, we're not talking about any of this area over here, correct?
That is the, what he's referring to as the existing urban renewal area.
Why wouldn't that have been in red there?
I think it's just the way Bruce was just.
We're describing the parcels to be removed.
Parcels to be removed.
Let's look at, um, on the document, the first step is a resolution.
It actually has a star, star showing it. It doesn't show those lots over there whatsoever.
I think the star, the star is showing the seven acres approximately that we, that, you know, our most recent discussion was about that area outlined in light blue with a star on it. And then the next picture, thick red outline, is that same seven acres with the star plus the four residential parcels.
Understood.
So.
But it doesn't show anything off the left that you, you're referring to.
No, I, I think.
Well, let's, let's, uh, let's read the resolution, I think maybe backward. This would be the first resolution mentioned in agenda, but obviously I'm not going to vote on that, but let's just talk about that. It says it's a resolution deleting property from the Atkins renewal area, urban renewal area. Atkins has about eight or nine urban renewal areas existing, they're just areas that are, are defined within the city. And, and they exist at different times for, for different projects as the city grew, that sort of thing. So it says whereas the city of Atkins has previously established the Atkins urban renewal area. Just a line drawn around things. Adopted an urban renewal plan for the governance of projects and issues to be undertaken therein. In other words, there were things that were done using those areas TIP monies. One of those areas is the commercial development, or at least the assistance with it, partially on the west side. And then it says whereas the city now desires to de, to decrease the size of that area by deleting certain property from the urban renewal areas as set out in exhibit A. So we turn to page two for exhibit A, and it mentions the address of each parcel and the parcels. So we got five thirty Stone Ridge Drive, five thirty four, five forty, five forty four.
That's those.
That's those, that's right, those things there.
That doesn't say anything about over here.
Correct. But it says we want to decrease it by those properties. And now therefore be resolved, the property in exhibit A is hereby deleted from the previous area and that, that's the first action.
Yep.
And the second action is an ordinance that basically says the same thing. But an ordinance is required. So the second item, this would be five B if we were doing it, would have said it's an ordinance deleting property from tax increment financing district, urban renewal. And it's the same, same thing, it's those four parcels that were described in the resolution. So, um, it says deleted, enacted, section one, section two. Section two shows deleted property shall mean a certain property tax parcel identified numbers, and it goes on to mention the same four tax parcels. So again, that's just backing up the resolution, it has to be ordinance because that's what the laws is. So then we move on to item five C. That's just a motion to approve. Five D. Final is the, the final consideration of the ordinance, ordinance normally has to be read three different times, three separate meetings, but it can be waived. But then moving on to item number E, a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on the new urban renewal area, which would include the seven acres plus the four parcels. So then, and that resolution would have set, just provided the date, which again has to be set by resolution. And then when we have a public hearing on that date, we would have an opportunity then to vote whether to approve the resolution, to approve the urban renewal plan, outlines the Stone Ridge fifth edition, seven acres plus four lots.
But you said that these four lots are part of that, the new. The one, zero, zero, four, one, nine, zero, four, two, one, zero, four, one, eight, zero, four, one, seven, zero.
No.
That's what we've been talking.
That's not the new area.
Not the new area.
But if you guys were talking about this the whole time, you were changing this.
That would, that would be considered, I believe, the existing urban renewal area.
Correct.
Bruce.
But we can, we can have Maggie come back and talk about that.
I, I, I think the problem is here is we don't understand why Maggie didn't need those properties in that existing TIP area. There, there's, there's a financial reason why she said we didn't need those in that they weren't a benefit, it would give us more benefit by putting them in this new area because of the way we had TIP available to us.
Well, we can take a list of, a list of questions you might have. And we can present those to Maggie and have her.
Well, I don't think, I honestly don't think that the four, one, seven, zero, the four, one, eight, zero are even part of this discussion.
Four, one, seven, zero.
The.
Oh, these?
Parcels off to the, the west there are not even in question, we're not even talking about those. We're only talking about the red areas and the starred area that is in these parcels, and that's all we're talking about. We're taking it out and then we're putting it back in. Doesn't make sense why we would take it out and then put it back in, and it doesn't make sense why we didn't have the seven acres in there to start with.
It's because the, the seven acres. We have, we just had that discussion with, with the developer just recently and so that, that seven acres wasn't in their plan, right?
It doesn't, the commercial nature of the original of the existing urban area, urban renewal area, have something to do with this?
Yes.
Because what we haven't done yet is approve a residential TIP, and that's what we did with those seven acres.
Correct, that's what this action is, is providing that. We, we talked about the formulation of the area, the, the dollar amounts and how those would be worked out with the evaluation forecast, if you will. And that was what Maggie did back in October.
So I think what, what might help is to have a, have a map of what we're referring to as the existing urban renewal area.
It'd be nice to know where all of the urban renewal areas.
Right, but I think that's, I think that's what you're asking for, correct, is?
Well.
There, what, what is the existing urban renewal area? Like what are we taking the four residential properties from is what you're asking for.
Yeah, why would we even do that?
So we can ask Maggie for, you know, whoever, for a, a map of the urban renewal, existing urban renewal areas. Basically the one that these four parcels are being taken from might help start the.
Yeah, but just since you're, well, I'll try to summarize these questions, but if you have anything, any more questions?
I think you're, you're right, have her come here. That way she can answer everything that we've got.
I think it's a pretty simple question, Dave wants to know why we took it out of one area and put it in a different area. Maggie said there was a financial advantage to that, I think we just need to get a clearer definition of what those financial differences are and the reasoning behind it.
That may be in the, oh, I know it's in the previous information perhaps, I'm sure that won't be a problem. Right. Moving on to item number six. Presentation by a representative of Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, IP.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, uh, thank you for giving me some time tonight. So for respect for everybody's time, I'll kind of give a brief overview of what Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust is, uh, and then really open it up for questions, uh, for, for anything that you guys want to ask. But Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust was started in nineteen eighty seven, and it is a money market fund for cities, counties, utility districts, and really any twenty eighty entity, any public entity in the state of Iowa. There are two parts of the fund, there is a diversified portion, which is a liquid asset fund, again, a money market fund that you have daily access to. So today that is at four eighteen, so four point one eight percent. Again, that is money that you have access to on a daily basis. Everything that is invested in that fund, we follow the same guidelines as the city of Atkins or any other municipality in the state. We have the same investment parameters, uh, under code twelve V one. So anything you can invest in as a city, we can invest in, in the fund, and that's the guidance that, that we follow. The other portion of the fund is we have a fixed rate portion. So what we can do in this portion of the fund is if you have a CD, if you're looking, you have a certain amount of money and you're looking to buy a CD or fix it in some way, shape or form, we have the ability to really shop those rates for you. So what we would do, we work with banks across Iowa, so we wouldn't reach out to the banks that you're at Atkins or the banks that you're working with. We might reach out to Davenport Bank or Hillbank Trust or Bank in Sioux City and, and shop those rates for you. So maybe it's a million dollars for twelve months, we'll bring those rates back to you and say, here's what we can offer. And you can do a couple of things with that, you can invest those within IP as a city of Atkins, or you can also take that to a local bank and say, and use it as leverage. Really, our goal is to make sure that everybody is earning cities, counties, utility districts are earning a fair end market rate. And so sometimes, and that's really why the fund was started, was to make sure that fair competition and that there's not, you know, maybe one particular financial institution that is making, you know, all the decisions and you're kind of stuck at that rate. So we're, you're able to get a really wide view of what it may look like across the state. And not only just CDs as well, so as may or may not be aware, treasury bills have, over the course of the last year and a half, two years, have outpaced CDs at certain times. So we're also able to buy individual treasury bills, treasury notes for you or, and or give you those rates. Again, if you want to take those to the local bank as well. There's no, no costs, no withdrawal costs, there's no tiers. Every dollar that goes into the fund is earning that rate. So the city of Ben, who's a participant, is earning the same rate as the city of Atkins, there is no dollar amount. Every dollar in there earns, earns the same rate. You can have as many accounts as you would like, take, again, as many withdrawals, as many transactions as you would like, as many signers as you would like. And also everything is, is online, just like everything pretty much is these days, but you're able to make all transactions online if you would like, or reach out to a member of our team, we're also able to do those transactions for you. I'll pause there and, and see what questions, yep.
What funds you?
What's that?
What funds you?
Uh, the, oh, the dollars, right, so you mean as far as what's in, in our fund?
No, how are you financed?
What, because you don't take a fee according to the sheet. So we, we have a spread, right, so you, you will never pay an individual fee, right? So the, today it's earning four eighteen, our actual rate that the fund is earning may be at four thirty five, right? So there's certain, there's different service providers as part of the fund, so IP is its own separate entity. So my, the company I work for is PMA, we're the marketer, we're the investment advisor and the administrator for the fund. So we are, we have certain base points, maybe, I believe it's a total of twenty basis points that we're taking as a spread on the overall fund. US Bank is our custodian, so then they would have their portion. And then Allers Law Firm is our legal counsel. So when we talk about how we make money, that's how we make money, right?
I get, I get, it's, it's over the, what you're offering us for.
Exactly right. Yep, so, so we're, and when I say, you know, you're earning that rate and there's no fees, you're never going to see a line item that says, you know, you had twenty transaction, here's, here's a fee. But yeah, we, we start on in a business.
You've got enough money, I just wanted to know where it comes from, deep answer, thank you.
Great question. What, what benefits do you think that that brings to, I know there's other entities that use IP.
Yeah.
What are some of the benefits you think to them?
For the city of Atkins? Yeah, I, you know, I think a couple of things, I think it's always good to have options, right? So when you're, you're going out for, maybe it's a CD bid, or maybe it's just, um, we're looking to make as much money as we can on operating dollars. You know, whether it's leverage to the local bank, or whether it's just, we want to cast a wide net, we want to see, you know, what, what rates are out there. Just like you would if you, you send out a, a bid to multiple financial institutions. I think the benefit of, of IP is you're able to maybe cast that, that net a little wider and, you know, really get a, a broader scope of, of rates across the state. The money market fund as well, it's, it's really, you are, you know what you're going to get in the diversified portion of it as well. So, you know, we are very, because we are a, a very short term, very liquid fund, we're going to be very, very closely tied to what the Fed Fund Rate is. So Fed Fund Rate comes down, uh, you know, you're, that, that rate's going to come down as well in a week, week and a half's time. So very predictable in that, that sense, if you look at Fed Fund Rate, we're probably right about ten, twenty basis points lower than that. Same thing was true a year ago when, when rates were coming up, right? So if rates are going up, the money market rates are also going up if you have money invested in it. And that, that, that's happening in a way where sometimes it takes a little while if everything is in. in the local bank. Again, banks are allies and have their own reasons for that, but sometimes that can lag behind and/or it takes a conversation to raise those. So it's very in-the-moment market rates would be my opinion. And the other thing, and kind of opposite side of the coin, there is no requirement for you to have, to invest in the fund by passing the resolution. So passing the resolution, to me, gives you another tool in the tool belt to say, we have this option, we have this resource, and we're able to use it if we want to, but we don't have to. And there's no obligations. You can open an account and have it set at zero for as long as you would like, but have that as an option if you ever decided to or it made sense of the fund.
So maybe second we need to look at is what kind of rate are we giving or are our monies just sitting there right now that we know we're not really touching? Do you know what that is in by any chance?
Not at the top, but that's been very well.
Is this Teresa by any chance know that? She on the phone?
Well, yeah, I'm on and I was listening. Can I ask who's talking to my people?
Oh, this is EJ.
Okay, I didn't think it sounded like Paul.
Oh, it's not Paul, no, it's Caleb Walter.
I'm sorry, say again?
Caleb Walter.
Caleb Walter. Yeah, actually, that's something that council needs to discuss because I received an email from the bank, Atkins Bank, telling me what rate they would give us on the bond money that's coming in. And they would set up a new account, a new money market account, and allow me to manage it as a, as a spend down separate money market account that we would like to do with the bond fund. And then I was going to call IP and get their rate. He just said 4.18. I was remembering. Is that what he said?
Yes, that's right. Yep. And that is for the...
Did I just say, should I just say, he said 4.18?
One.
Four point one.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the email I got from the bank was 4%. So I do know that the local bank was bought one-third of the bond also. So I, I want the council to consider all of those options as they make a decision on where we want those bond funds to go.
How easy is it to, you said you can obviously make hand actions if you want.
Yep.
How easy would it be, obviously, these guys got to implement it into the programs, the software and stuff like that, you know? Do you guys...
Oh, it's incredibly easy.
Okay, yes. The opposite side of things is simple.
All right, two sides.
What you're saying?
Yeah, I used IP all the time when I was in Johnston.
Okay.
And I also, our biggest bank bidder was always Bernal State Bank, of course, they were right down the street from Johnston. And both of them were very, worked very closely with me. I'm not sure what sort of bank openly would do. I was able to just go online and electronically move the, move the amount of money that I needed to bond fund, to take money each time I break claims, which is why I said I usually would take two drops a month because we'd take claims twice a month. So I haven't, I just got that email today from the bank, and I haven't reached back out to him yet to ask him how automatic all that is. So I was trying to try to get that information. I kind of knew the drill. I think side of the way, other than I didn't know the rate yet. So then I'll bring it all back to the mayor and let you guys decide. We'll have to be letting Maggie know probably by next week sometime before we want her to wire some money in so that she's ready to go.
Is that Maggie Mutter? Yes, yeah, okay. We work with Maggie a lot. I know Maggie very well.
You'll know some more about that, too.
So did Maggie ask you to be here then? No.
Maggie did refer her...
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I didn't know that. We do work with Maggie a lot, though.
She recommended it.
So who, how did you find out about us?
Yeah, Amy asked to come present.
And I know the landfill commission, they have an account for IP as well.
Yep, yep. Iowa County, then Solid Waste Commission, again, city of Atkins uses us extensively. We also have a school fund, and I think there's only three districts in the state currently that do not, have not passed the resolution. So very robust on the, on the school side as well. So we're doing it, doing it a long time. The one thing I was going to say on the rate, so we also do, again, work with Maggie a lot. And so, you know, depending on the project, too, there's also, we work a lot with bond proceeds. So sometimes it makes sense to not keep everything liquid, right? So if it's a two-year project and we're looking at a sinking rate environment, there's a scenario where it makes sense to lock in some of those longer term. And so that's something that we can help with as well, which at this point in time, you know, as we go out a little bit further, we can probably up that 418 a little bit just by kind of locking in rates, knowing, again, that at some point probably here over the course of the next year, how many times I don't know, but they're going to potentially cut rates, you know, at least a couple of times most likely throughout this year.
So a quick question.
Yeah.
I was getting set already.
Yep.
What kind of, if, obviously, you know, if we had to jump in and get that money, say, whatever, emergency or something happened in Atkins, I imagine it's probably some kind of penalty.
If, 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 just like, kind of like a CD, right? So if you were locked into a fixed term investment, there would, depending on, if we did a CD, depending on what bank that would be, all the banks are a little bit different on their, you know, penalties. On treasury side, we would, we would sell those CDs. So you can always get out on the diversified portions of the money market portion. If we didn't do any fixed term, that money is available as long as we know by 3 o'clock before markets close, that money's back in the bank next day.
So that's it of you versus our local bank is interest rate only?
Yeah, again, I think there's a couple of different things. I think, you know, your bank relationships are very important because there's a lot of things that they do that we can't do, right? You can't write checks off of your IP account. It's, you can't do vendor pay or those things. So those are important, I think. The benefits of us, I think, go hand in hand with the local bank. All right, so if our rate is better potentially, that's a benefit. If, if we're not, you know that you're earning a great rate, right? So if, if your local bank is paying the same that we're paying, you know, it's adverse action and you want to keep that local relationship, and we understand that. You know, the issue starts to be when, when you can have 4% and you're, and you're earning 2%, that's when, you know, the scale starts to tip. Again, we don't want to take away anything from the law constitution. Again, banks are allies. We work closely with them. But at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, everybody's getting a good rate and a market rate at the end of the day.
I think we've got a strong case for bond proceeds. We've got to, we still got to get...
Absolutely.
We got to get an update on timeline for demand of those funds.
Right.
But what maybe we don't have a good understanding on is the 3.7 million commingled across all the funds that's at the bank as well, right? And is that in a demand account or is that, could we manage that a little smarter to get some yield? I'm assuming Theresa, we did, you know, the only offer I've heard was related to the bond proceeds. And so I think DJ's original point is for our operational cash, you know, what is our, what do we have right there or right now, you know, from the bank there?
No, that's the bank.
Yeah.
No, that's the bank.
Well, I think tonight's approach would be to essentially set up the account and then there'd be some further discussion on the amounts and...
Absolutely.
How we want to use the account or not use it. We can do either one if we set it up.
And setting it up, to your point earlier, I think, or maybe you mentioned this, doesn't mean...
It doesn't, no, there is zero obligation.
Because I, too, I see the, I see a lot of value in, you know...
I mean, I understand...
In the relationship we have with our local bank and doing that. I'm curious, Theresa, what answers or what questions are you waiting for answers back on from Atkins Savings Bank?
Not from the bank, waiting for the spend down of the bond maybe. To know if we could have some longer term holes, I guess, of the fund.
And that's coming from your, that information comes...
In here.
It's got to be coming from your collective.
I forget someone here.
So, so my thought process on this would be, obviously, with those funds, certain dollar amount we have to have right away, certain dollar amount you have to give at the end. I mean, we all can kind of see what the market's doing right now. It's going to probably drop. Find something that's locked in a longer term, you know, and lock those into a CD or something and see what kind of rate you have, knowing that the project of the fire department might take whatever it is, a year, year and a half. And that, actually, take those dollars, lock them in, and then you keep some liquid in the money market, and then you figure out what you've got just sitting here that we can take either, you know, divide a certain amount of in the Atkins Bank, whatever, get to the best rate, have your liquid cash in checking account and kind of divide it up. That's kind of what we tell people all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, because if you look at it this way, so if we're at 4, 418 today, and you can lock in right now around, right around that for a year, and so if we get one, you know, one cut throughout the next year, it makes sense to have done that.
So and then what's our rate again on the, on the bond? Like, is it four what? What's the rate? So if, what was that, Teresa?
The bond that you just sold.
Yeah, what's the rate?
Our true interest cost rate...
Yeah.
Was 4.5.
So you can make money or get it to cover the interest. It's kind of, you kind of feel like you're a...
At least getting as close as you can.
Getting as close as you can so you're not, you know, you're...
You're earning, you're earning what it costs you to borrow.
Correct, and that's the goal. So you don't always get to do that. Generally speaking, you don't get to have any of that.
Correct. A lot of people run into arbitrage issues now where they're earning more than what they're paying, and they have to have them to pay rebates back to the IRS. So, yeah, as close as you can get to that, that specific number, you know, is what the goal should be.
Theresa, can I?
Sure.
No, I'm, how do we, I just, I really think it's important to support the local banks. How do we loop them in? I mean, Andy's here. I don't know if we can do that now or not. It depends.
Well, you had to first set up the, the resolution tonight is just to set up an account. Doesn't, doesn't do anything with the funds at all?
Yeah, and we, and we do, like I said, banks are our allies, and if there's a way that we can work with a bank, you think, we're a funding source for a lot of different banks across the state. So there are times where banks need funding. They need dollars to live. You know, we can be a funding source for that. And so whether it's bond issues or, you know, really, we partner with banks a lot and are willing to do that in any scenario if it makes sense both ways. So, you know, whether that's, again, just getting on the call, you discussing, but we're open to that always, too.
From my, from my part, I'm inclined, from what I've heard, to keep the bond proceeds with Atkins Bank. Certainly appreciate there's just one of bond issue.
Yep.
And I think that's important to acknowledge that. I do think maybe we got something to think about on this operational cash question, but probably need a cash management policy.
Yeah.
You know, to stipulate what, what amount we keep on hand and what, what is, you know, vested in IP, how we think about differential yield opportunities between IP and perhaps, you know, Atkins Savings Bank or any other bank that we would consider. I just, with bond proceeds, I think that's the direction I'd like to go.
Do you want to entertain a motion to accept this resolution? Motion to accept the resolution. Second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Here and done, roll call booked. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Jim Caris. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah. Hey, yeah, it sounds great. Yep, absolutely. And if any other questions come up, I know, I think you have my contact, so any other questions, let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven. Resolution approving payment of payout 14 for Ross and Echo Homes for the amount of $48,028.37 as far as, as part of the pass-through grant for the CDPG housing. These are the, that's in the normal resolutions and payouts we've been doing about every month. And the resolution states that we do not make the payment until we receive the funds. Those will become from IPDA and deposited directly into Atkins' checking account. With a motion, deposit by... The, um, the bottom of this, the question on when we pay when we make the payment? Are we on, which one are we on? Resolution, or item number?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, resolution approving the payment.
No, I thought we were off the topic, which is then...
You went into the bank.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry about that. Motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? Here and done, move on to roll call. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
Jim Caris. Okay, moving on, number eight. Theresa, the discussion on the proposed city budget for FY '26.
Am I asked?
You're up. Theresa, thank you.
I will. Okay, what was the agenda as you wanted to have a mayor? Were we going through each of these summary pages or what was your plan?
The, for the ones that we have that completed information, would you like to review them?
All right. I, do I know which one you have completed? Did you send me the completed ones today?
No, I didn't.
I mean, the last column. All my pages are completed.
Yeah.
I just didn't get the column you had requested in there completed.
Get the information.
For that last column with their justification. I think Amy indicated you've been trying to meet with some people and get some of that information from them. And I didn't know if you had any, get that done or, or give me that information. So if not, we can just, I'll just pull up my sheet. Did you, did you pass those out to everyone?
No, we did not print anything out tonight. Just some odd information, so possibly this discussion...
So they don't have any of those sheets? Am I able? I'm sorry, do you want?
Were they in an email?
Um, well, I sent them last week, Amy's, the year, the, and you and the mayor, and da, 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 da. So if this whole rest of them are completed, then... then, um, they're completed in the email that I was, that I sent on January 21st.
We don't have anything printed out tonight, then? Or forward it out?
Does anyone have computers out in front of them? Or not?
Is she ask... Are you asking if we have computers in front of us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Most of us do.
That I said, EJ has a spot in the room, so does have computers.
We can rip off some, we can rip the sheets off quick, too.
I just forwarded people.
Okay.
So, um, Reese, Amy, Sandy, that's who you have here. Benny Peterson. And David, David Fisher. David Fisher. Trevor Dersky. Donal. EJ. Jim, do you think it's Jim King, or?
That's correct. Correct, Jim King.
Is Jim K O E H N? Or is it J K O E H N?
K O E H N.
Yeah, is that Jim?
That's correct.
The company? Oh, that's not how you spell jeans. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay. Boom. Are there any perpetrators in the council chamber?
Yes, we have, um, public works, a water sewer, and also parks, and streets, and roads.
Okay, so, if, uh, when everybody opens up their, um, their Excel spreadsheet, if they see the tabs at the bottom, you can just jump on down to parks.
Okay.
And start there, if you'd like. Now, when I look at parks, let's not start there apparently, because it wasn't done. We already did road use tax that first night. Uh, and, um, this will give people something to have at home to look at more of a definition. But this is what the, the last column, I thought the mayor wanted people to add, which was, uh, figuring out how does this help the city of Atkins, and, um, writing in some sort of justification, um, or writing in the vendor, or, um, what the tax history actually costs city of Atkins, if you were doing it by contracting it out. That was supposed to be going in that last column K. So, if we, um, if we go to the sewer fund, again, um, you know, I, I guess, I don't need to read these to you guys, I don't know what kind of questions you may have.
Well, I believe the, the values that are entered now are, are new to the council, from, from my recollection of our previous meetings. So I guess the idea there, just to repeat those.
No, it's a surprise that, yeah, no one's surprised that parks one isn't done. Um, I thought they were all done, so Lord help me, I sent you the right one, right? Um, all of the parks one I have in front of me doesn't have anything written on it. Amy, tell me, just send me something with parks data in.
Amy left the room, Theresa.
I don't have, uh, work to have any parks data in.
She's in the office, she's coming back.
Putting into that stuff. So, a couple of things that are, are different, um, I know I wanted to talk about a little bit. Uh, in general government, uh, when we go to the tab for general government, which is, um, planning and zoning, um, mayor, Atkins council, um, city clerk, election, legal services, that type of thing. Um, I, we put in here, so everyone's salary on July 1st. Everyone's wage for July 1st is the same as they're currently making. But the mayor had asked that I determine what, uh, 3.5% rule would be on the full-time people. And that amount of money is $37,000. And if you look at your tab for general government, in line 14 of that Excel sheet, you'll see where that has been placed in the budget. And, um, I just called it, uh, pool of money on current full-time permanent employees, part-time salaries, and I call this performance salary plus wage adjustment, because he said you made adjustments later in the year last year. Um, he wanted money there in case you wanted to make adjustments, adjustments next year. But he didn't want an assumption of me putting that 3.5% on everyone's salary straight up. So everyone's salaries are, um, are pretty much the same. Not pretty much, they are the same. But then, if you, if you scroll down on that very same page, you're gonna see that I, I didn't, honestly, did not know what to do with city administration and finance. Um, you know, if you get a, an actual finance director in here versus, um, having an auditing firm, or, um, an accounting firm helping you, and me helping you. So at this time, I pretty much put it all down under, um, auditing, uh, accounting, and really no full-time wage. Um,
Amy, tell Theresa about she was...
I'm back, Theresa.
Amy. Amy, I, I, um, I don't have any worksheets with any parks numbers in them, which is why the parks one isn't up to date.
Okay.
So, I know that we talked together, and I know I have, um...
It's, so the worksheet, I believe, the worksheet was probably combined with roads in your email?
Yeah. Could you rebook and make, see if there's a G worksheet and an explanation sheet? And read some of them to me, Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, on, I don't know if that's a typo for me, Amy, or if we have a reason why your office is requesting, and I think we talked about this. And then, yeah, I can eat parks, and there's a tab, so, you know, or, no, no, no. Anyway, um, Amy, under office equipment and general government and city clerk's office, I have $115,000. $115,000. We're in, we're in, have some explanations, and even the ones we talked about today are not going to equal $115,000.
I'm, I'm not sure what that is from. Um, if you're saying just for city hall general?
Office, it's just on office.
$13,000.
That might be a manual typo.
So, take that note.
Yeah, I think it was supposed to be $11,300, everyone? Um, one of the other things I, on this budget, if you, uh, on that tab for general government, if you look at the line 34, um, the credit card fees, in my opinion, those really should be municipal water and sewer, because they're not paying any credit card fees for any general government activities. Those have to be for their utility bill.
Right, and that, those fees, the transaction fees, could be paid to the processing company?
Right.
For building, okay. So that would be to move those to water and sewer.
Correct. Do you, do you have any, is there anything that's happening that I don't know about?
No.
That would mean we shouldn't move in there?
No, that's probably all water, utility building.
And?
Now, I, I think, you brought up before, Theresa, and I think we also need to, to whatever extent we can, allocate wages, appropriate wages to those categories, too, out of general government.
Right, I did complete with, um, if I can find this in my Excel document. I did do a wage distribution sheet for Atkins. I'll do it. Amy, do you remember that? Sometimes, maybe it stays in, I don't know, over there.
For all employee, I believe that we did, um, the parks, sewer, water, we divided, we allocated those to what they've always been. I don't know that we've done any...
And we didn't do anybody else's?
I don't, I don't believe we did office staff, 'cause really, I don't get that much with the general funding.
Okay. So...
Like, we've, we've heard, we've heard that, that at least, you know, it's, it's near a full-time equivalent for just utility billing. And, and so I think that needs to be reflected in the, in the construction. Because otherwise, it looks like there's, there's general government expense that there's not really, because that's associated with the enterprise funds.
Yeah, as an example, um, Perry or, Perry and Amy are, um, 99% out of general fund.
Okay.
And 1% out of, we don't know where.
I think it meets the intent, what you're describing there.
Yeah, I think that we could think of...
So, do you think we, as, uh, staff and consultants should just sit down and talk about what we think we really do, spend our time doing? And where they should pay from? Or do you think it's just those guys? I, you know, we don't know necessarily why it's different between, like, Jared, um, who's a, a public works associate, his public works associate split is different than, um,
Right, each of the...
Michael.
Right, each of the public works.
Michael's one?
Correct.
Do they have any difference of...
Yeah, see, each has a general specialty, but they also share resources, so, those were numbers based on analysis, I don't know, by hours, I'm not sure how many, how long ago, but it's probably a couple of years old. Using two-year old data, that's time data.
Okay, maybe I'll just try to take it off of this report, so it isn't a cumbersome, and then you can see it just still perfect. But even like one of the, was it your town, or was it another town, that one of the library people was taken out of water and sewer? Amy, was that you?
I don't think so.
It might have been in so many places.
Right, I would, I would not expect that in Atkins.
Okay.
Now, there could be,
Yeah, just be a recheck.
Could be in the library, there'd be some, some portion of, um, their service to serve the parks, because of the park pavilion rental and, um, reservation arrangement, because they do spend
Okay.
time doing that, so...
Okay, well, I'll double check all of that. Um, what about, I guess, what kind of question do you guys have for me? Not sure.
Theresa, as far as I'm concerned, the information you provide is only what passed through to you, so I'm not, I don't have questions for you.
Okay.
What questions do you have?
First and foremost, uh, do we have ju, we don't have any justification uh, for the spends that we talked about the last meeting, that we said we were going to have, by item, by line, and so, um, that's what we're still waiting for yet, is justification for each spend. Um, again, I am a proponent of, you have a budget, you own that budget as a department head. When you own that budget, you can speak to that budget. You can also make sure that, um, when we're not needing budget, you can speak to it from that perspective, and how you're going to adjust from that point. Furthermore, you work your plan, you, you make your plan, and then you work your plan, and then you, uh, institute everything that needs to happen. And I'm not hearing that. I never heard that last year, I'm not hearing that this year. So, I gotta hear that. So, I gotta hear that first, and foremost.
Teresa, for the general government technology services, there's $35,000 there. Is that for the, just looking for the spot where the, where the software upgrades? The accounting system would be placed?
I think that's where you're placing. See if I have a note there. Actually, what I have is an asterisk, that doesn't say that something. And I think, ah, it looks like I wrote $35,000 in there. So, maybe that's a guess based on what we've talked about, the laser each, and, some other items. Amy, what are they?
I'm not sure where the amount came from, but, but we had talked about laser fish and just regular upgrades to our software. So, I know Tewors upgrade was 15,000 this year.
Oh, right.
So it might even be more than that.
There might be some to trim around general government, I think. Now, just looking across here, I think the big discretionary, potentially discretionary spends are in parks, fire, sewer water, and then we already heard from road use tax. So I think, I think we heard from you road use tax, we didn't, you guys know that?
We were still waiting for information.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, what specifically? I, my, my view on road use tax was that we heard the request and then it was kind of like, well, maybe, maybe we're waiting for what the cost would be if we're going to go contract for some of the potential purchases, but the main thing I recall was, filled it in one piece, now we need to hear from everything else because we don't know, you know, if we can fund those requests because we need to hear the requests from everything else. And so I think, you know, there's still questions outstanding for revenues, we at least took the first swing, but I think then sewer water.
The only thing that I'm going to say is I, I just want, I, I want to be able to all of us agree on it, obviously, but for you guys to go back and look at it, go, okay, needs and wants, okay, do we need it this year? Some of the stuff might need to be kicked into 2027, you know, what's the true needs and wants, like, okay, you gave us this, go back to the drawing board and, you know, what, because you know more than we're going to know. For your guys' stuff, I mean, I'm just being honest with you, you don't want us to say, just slash it, well, you, I mean, for your stuff, you know?
So there's, there's a column K here in each tab that says, how does this help Atkins justification vendor or task history? So, was it, are intentions to have each department fill out that column? So many of yous haven't gotten there yet, I think that would be.
And also to break out each, if it's, if the item in the budget request line or column is a multiple of items, break it out as to what they are. So you can get an idea where that, where that funding is coming.
So for the, like, our meeting on Tuesday at night's late, right? Last year, we, we kind of broke the meeting, the workshops down from, there was one where we focused on fire and daily library at the same time like here, and we kind of broke each meeting out to focus on specific departments. I thought that was helpful to kind of, I mean, we have, Todd and Jared are here tonight, but it doesn't sound like we're ready to go kind of line by line like Dave's suggesting, but that's something that we want to do in one of the next workshops and fill out that column K and then kind of go line by line and talk about, Jerry, we're going to break down the, what we've spent on leasing facility equipment versus the request to purchase some of it. So can we, can we pick one of the workshops and focus on, these guys and then invite Dan and, and hand us a separate one, I think that was helpful last time.
That spacing works pretty well.
Line by line just helps all understand.
So for next Tuesday.
And my, my concern, Amy, is that the department has need to get it done, so they've had it now. I know I only gave it from the day of the meeting, so we still come, so they did have a whole week. And I would have thought they could have been done with that column, but, you know, I know Trevor and a few of the other council persons were pretty driven on their schedule, and so, and I don't want our schedules to drag out into middle of February, that's not what they want.
So for next Tuesday, a week, week from today.
Well, it's the, it's the way that calendar tech is that we're forced into with the no earlier then and the no later then, in terms of, you know, getting on public hearings.
Tuesday's going to turn into a regular meeting, not a work session, correct?
No.
Well.
Then your work session, we could just have.
Correct, we would have, was that part of the regular session.
We were just going to have a work session, but now we're going to do a regular meeting again.
I'll just say, like, internally, we are struggling, keeping up with this budget calendar and trying to push something on, Teresa's been great in, you know, helping us to try to keep up on this calendar.
I don't, so not to throw a complete wrench in this, Bruce, what, what's our flexibility? I've actually, I actually won't be able to, to attend next Tuesday anymore, right? It's a critical situation of working, I just, we don't have the flexibility for me to miss it. What's our option for, to give them a chance to catch up, I guess? I can, we can look later in the week, if Thursday's an option for folks, if you wanted to move it, I mean, I don't think you'd be a beat for the regular session, I don't, right, the, the hiring contract, but it sounds like they need time.
After tonight.
But I want to make sure, we have to have at the end, at some point, revenue's got to come into this conversation. And so we have to have that, that chance at the end to hear everybody's plan, but then TJ's one, I'm just, I think we're seeing probably a situation, we'll deal with this every year, and it's, it's totally normal for public budgeting, budgeting of any kind, to separate needs and wants, and the, the only way, I, I don't know how we would do that without also seeing, you know, how revenue lines up with these items. So we, that's what I want to make sure we have the time for at the end.
And Teresa, the revenue side.
Which I think we got that printed last time, right? If we could get that initially, Teresa, that would help.
Okay.
And I don't know how this looks, but the needs and the wants, everything's in here right now, and to my, to, when I look at this, I see a budget that's a half a million dollars and just one, one area is a half a million dollars over. We definitely got to get in there, we got to, we got to figure out, is there, is there's, where's those needs and there's wants? And propose the needs as the budget, and hey, we've also got these other items, I don't know how you're going to do that, but needless to say, having, being a half a million dollars over as well.
Would you want, where is that at?
I'm just talking about road use tax.
Right, because that's the only one that actually does have, do they know, so water and sewer are netted, right? Yes.
Well, you've got a positive.
Water is up.
Water, and your sewer.
That's probably a bond proceeds portion of that.
And your sewer is in excess of 400, almost 400 pounds, so.
Water is negative.
Can we just pair ourselves back for something?
So the, since, since you guys are here, what makes sense to you as far as timeline on?
Hopefully we don't have interruptions, last week we had a couple of days of snow and then we had another day of a camp called issues. And we do have enough that fills our day without.
Sure.
For this, I mean, what Amy says, the, the lack of staffing really hits home here, I mean, we're not used to doing, you know, three quarters of what we've been trying to put together this year, we don't know, I mean, we're not accountants how to run the numbers and listen to everything, so. Lot of falls on, you know, interruptions, hopefully we have a quiet week and we can, yeah, work on some of these. I will say that 80 or 90% of this stuff is, is a can on the road and it's either pick up the can now or keep, keep kicking it. That's just, that's just the reality of things, it's, it's sad that where we're at with now, a lot of things are because of, quite frankly, kicking cans for 20 or 30 years and not, you know, putting it all on you guys, you guys are, you know, we're all, we're all catching it, we've, got to, you know, deal with what we're dealing with, but again, it is, it is what it is. But yeah, hopefully we'll have a quiet, quiet week and not a lot of interruptions and, and we can put a little bit more explanation for, I can, um, my stuff, a lot of Jared's stuff to talk about, but.
Do you think a week is realistic?
I hope so, I stopped that a couple of times in the past, so I usually get started and I have to either go to Amy or, I do, Amy or Jared or Bruce. Say, what am I looking at here and how am I breaking that up, because I'm just kind of a siphon, learning a lot of this stuff myself.
Because it, it might be where we could ask the library and the fire, you know, Dan to come in and explain, do you think you need more time?
Well, the only other thing I worry about is, you know, if we, we go through it once and there's going to, I don't know, it's just going to be, you know, agreed upon or, or struck, I guess I, I don't know if there's going to be rework, you know, to meet and then come back later, I guess I'm not sure. So I hate to push it all, you know, down the end and, and, so, I, I guess, you know.
Well, I appreciated that saying, and all of a sudden I go down, just give us the chance now, we can just.
That's Todd.
Are you, Teresa, I know you're on vacation, Teresa, when are you back? I mean, I'm, would it be, would we?
I don't know, I don't know if I'm coming back.
That sounds like a plan.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Honestly, I'm not coming back till the end of February.
Okay, well, we'll, we can set up virtual meetings with you still, right, where you're at?
Yeah, it's really.
Okay, I didn't know if you were moving around or you had some family things to deal with there, but we'll set up.
We're, yeah, we're in this location until Saturday and then we moved to another location in the three or four weeks, then I'll be home.
Okay.
So it's not very.
We'll set up the virtual things, get your schedule, we'll work. Definitely to get some of those breakout items, breakout numbers from the public works. And send those off to you and then we'll have a sit down to see if that's adequate for what you need and how we're going to explain priorities. Determined on public work side and then reflect that in our information so council can take that.
I, I do, I want to apologize to the mayor and council for not having those financial reports done for you, however, I did just get the report from Tricia yesterday sometime, and when I first ran the report, of course, nothing matched the reports I was getting off our financial software, so I was, I quite frankly was creeping out a bit and bothering Amy a bit, and, you know, there's a couple of things that, that concern me and it wouldn't be right if I didn't just at least voice them to you. You know, the more, I want to be careful how I say this, I was going to say the more hands in the cookie jar, the more there could be mistakes. I don't need hands in the cookie jar as much as I need processes in making the cookies. So, at this point, Tricia uses a different software than our current financial software uses to reconcile the bank. She uses a different software to process payroll, she uses a different software to handle the utility billing, and then somewhere along the line, and Amy, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to say anything out of school, but somewhere along the line, then she has to make reports out of all of her systems and then re-put them back into our software system, which is our financial software and the bible that I'm living and breathing and dying by and telling you folks are the right numbers. And somewhere, things aren't quite tying out the way I believe they should be tying out. As an example, our benefits, our benefits for our general fund employees should be taken for out of Fund 1112. I mentioned that to Amy, she agreed, she and Tricia have talked about it, and somehow Tricia's going to make some more journal entries to fix that. There's an issue with the deposit that some very smart people have been trying a long time to figure out in the last several weeks and, and haven't been able to accomplish it and are now getting our software people involved to help figure out that $10,000 deposit and why it's messing up. Tricia's book, I mean, for her to find the give me the balance yesterday, it was with the caveat that there's a $10,000 variance that they're working with, she works on, that made me nervous too. So, I just want to say as a financial consultant, and I want it on record, that those things make me nervous. And that the more there are layers upon layers, feeding layers upon layers, is when this professional is going to say, uh-uh, I'm not comfortable, and, and I've been trying to figure that out. So I just wanted to share that with you guys and really want to figure out a way to make sure this doesn't, doesn't become a real problem. So, I don't know, I, I, I'd be telling you a problem and not giving you an answer, I know what my answer would be, but I also know that that. I also know that that is, um, maybe not an acceptable answer to you guys. So I, um, when I wanted to do my bank rec today and I wanted to do the treasures report to you, I can do my bank rec. But when I went in to do the year today treasures report, I was about by six hundred or sixty thousand some odd dollars and I thought, I can't give them that. And I, I was too stressed out to try to figure it out in five minutes. So that's why there wasn't a report.
Thanks for that explanation, but that makes sense. And, and again, I, I appreciate you, you explaining that to us. And, uh, uh, we trust you, or I trust you.
And there isn't anybody that I don't trust either. I just know that it just makes it harder or somehow makes it harder. And I don't want to make it harder, but that's.
I, I should say I trust your decision to not do that, I guess, is the best word to put that.
Amy, is there a situation where you think, um, we can, you know, tentatively believe help is coming? Um, you know, is this a situation that, uh, you know, you feel comfortable we can get through the next, you know, five or six weeks?
I, I sure hope.
Because it sounds like it's a, I mean, so it sounds like our decision to outsource, uh, maybe that's not the right word, but just kind of the arrangement we put together here to, to do our bookkeeping, um, and manage G-Works is just not working. Is that, is that a summary? I mean, are you comfortable with maybe that conclusion?
Yeah. Uh, I, yeah.
We can talk to Tricia. We do, we do have meetings with Tricia and Teresa. Just the latest schedules have not, have not everybody's been there at the same time. So I think if we had a dedicated time, Teresa with Tricia, and we'll walk, walk through your concerns. And see if she has alternate methods or plans. Are we in an interim stage on this? Are we working toward the end goal of being able to directly communicate with our software? And that could be a driver for the type of software we replace our current with. So I'd like to know those.
Look, it sounds like a synchronization issue. I mean, is this, is what a standing weekly meeting address this, this issue?
We, we are, so we're supposed to be having those and, um,
Yeah, just the schedules to keep everybody on.
Yeah.
On that schedule.
I, I, I just don't know, in, in all honesty, gentlemen, I don't know enough about the private sector accounting world. I just know that the government accounting world is way different than the private sector. And, and I am absolutely high A, you know, stay in my lane, government accounting. And, um, when that doesn't happen, I get nervous. That's the problem. And, um, you know, uh, yes, I think if she and I could talk, I, I always get her voicemails. And, and just have been able to get return calls. So I'll just keep trying and we have a call, I think this Thursday, we have one every Thursday morning. I don't have a schedule this, this, uh, but, um, I'll keep trying. But from my, from my position, I, I don't want to let you folks down. So I wanted to tell you why you didn't have the report from you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Thank you, Teresa.
Do that.
We've got some work ahead of us here to get some information to you. And, uh, we'll be in touch, especially after tonight, we'll be able to develop, develop more of our time to that budget task, for sure.
Perfect. Look forward to it. Forward to it. Is that it for me?
I think so. Thank you, thank you.
Bye, Neil.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Good luck everyone.
All right. Okay, going on to reports, mayor's report. The W2s have gone out. Um, snow plowing went pretty well. There's, the recent one anyway, there was some chip seal streets that were experiencing some tear up and things. So some areas only got sand and salt just because of the lack of snow. There wasn't that much to plow. Hiring process continues and we do plan to have that, that on the agenda for next Tuesday evening. We'll keep it to that at this point. Of course, we're working with budget information and the bond information has been prepared. Tonight we have follow up signatures and emails and copying that has to be done, but downhill side of that thing. And then from the fire station, the contractor tax forms, insurance information, all that's been going out to, I think about thirty or so contractors, we have to provide those for all that. And office is working on that. Federal processing is this week. Of course, the urban renewal documents and, and editing, completed that this week. Last, through the last week. Mayor readings also occur this week. Started the safety trainings once a month. Had success with one of those last, last week, that was the first one. Attended the AC cog meeting last two weeks ago and, um, we do have an accounting software update, that's the G-Works. Yeah, it requires a system changeover to a new version and that version will require some additional staff hours. Uh, we have a vendor meeting this week to review what those staff hours are and, uh, how they're gonna cooperate with us. That's the vendor. Made some contacts with the building inspection, building inspector issue and, uh, we're waiting for some good responses to come back. So far it's just been kind of tagging off to people. And I attended the Benton County EMA meeting last evening. And also the federal funding freeze, you may have heard on television that, uh, there's some federal funding executive orders that are going out. And I'm not sure if that's gonna, it's up in the air yet, whether those would impact anything that we're involved with. So somebody's asked that, but we don't know at this point, so. And on the water odor report, um, it began about, um, last Thursday, I think it was, in the H2S.
Third day, it's great morning.
Everything. And that, uh, that began with the cold temperatures that we had and, uh, Todd, do you want to talk about that and how that was fixed up?
Um, yeah, I worked on it again, that was more today, kind of working backwards. Nutshell, I think the cold temperatures was causing a little bit of resistance on a fan. We're finding out that the, the fan, uh, relay was actually weak and so, a series of events that, that fan shut off and that fan is actually what strips the, uh, H2S gas off the water. So in essence, the, the, uh, H2S, the hydrogen sulfide, that actually comes up in the water. Um, a, a portion of that was going out with the water. Uh, everything's safe. We, we were actually getting the water that we were, that we got before we built this water plant. So it's actually what atoms drank for fifty or a hundred years. Uh, but anyway, I know it brought a whole few of, uh, cosmetic issues that, uh, people aren't used to. But, um, and it does, once you got that out in the system, it takes a day or two, you know, to, to work itself through the system. Um, I am working with, like I said, electrician on the short, in the things, uh, we replaced some electronics. Uh, uh, as best a term, like overtime breakers can get weak. That was kind of what was happening. Um, when the weather gets a little bit better, we're running, uh, I got some cleaning to do inside the water plant, inside some equipment that will hopefully help this, uh, efficiency issue. So it won't cause that added, uh, you know, ten percent or whatever of, uh, load on that motor that was, was causing things. Um, so, so yeah, it's just a, you know, mechanical pickup and something you, you don't foresee and then when it happens, you know, and the flood covering, several, several things, so. I hope it never happens again, but, but, um, but we'll do our best.
So mayor's report. Council number reports.
So the water issue, um, I heard a lot about that. Furthermore, I heard it from my wife because on Saturday it was, uh, really strong in our house. Our entire house was engulfed with that smell. A communication went out to all the people of this town that was apparently misleading. And, um, it wasn't just due to cold weather, uh, that.
Electronic issue we just found out since last Friday morning.
Understood, but isn't it better to communicate with the public as we're investigating this? And right now we believe it might be cold water, but we're also investigating it. Rather than telling somebody that we got cold wa, weather and sending that out to the public because it, it really wasn't the fact. And we've had cold weather before and that was the cause.
It, like we guessed, it, 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 there's a lot.
I'm not pointing it at you.
No, I, I have a little bit of an issue that when we send out a notice, we get, well, I guess there was three calls that I found out total at City Hall. I have seen a little bit on social media. Social media is absolutely, uh, uh, unwarranted, despicable. People are, it, they go in tangents and, uh, it just.
I can tell you my wife went on a tangent on me on Saturday.
Okay.
And I wasn't there in the house. So I guarantee it, it stunk.
Yes, uh, H2S, to give you an idea of what that is, uh, at, at five hundred or a thousand parts, it'll kill you. At, at a hundred parts per million, it'll give you, uh, watery eyes. Uh, fifty parts per million, it, it may cause a, a little bit of irritation. You might notice it. To detect it is point one seven. I mean, it, I mean, yeah, just a, it, it, a little bit goes a long ways.
That's not my point. Uh, my point is the communication. We don't, if we're still investigating, we don't need to be sending out if just because of the cold weather. That's all I'm making a full answer.
The cold weather.
Because that is misleading as hell and I can guarantee you, everything out there on social media was right. They were right. When you say that it's only due to cold, cold weather, that's not what it was for.
The cold weather, the sub-zero cold weather, the below, ten below zero for an extended period of time is what's caused it each time this winter. And there was a time or so last year, we had a three or four day stretch. And that was the camel that, that's what.
But that's not the cause. That's not the cause. The cause was not that.
No, well, I'm finding out, uh, just as I said a little bit ago.
Right.
That started, well, we just, that's just, I mean, I'm still working on it today.
I understand that. I get that.
Yeah, but I'm still a little bit of the class, the more information it seems we put out there, the more it gets turned upside down. I've seen posts where there's, signal there's fifty to seventy-five posts on social media about an issue. And they're saying we need to fire this, we need to quit this, we need to reelect that. And there isn't one single phone call up here. To me, that is like anonymous, ignore it, it doesn't exist. I do not respond.
Apparently you're not ignoring it. Apparently it's getting to you.
No.
I'm just saying, we should not say this is the cause because that wasn't the cause. We're still investigating. That's all I'm saying. Okay. And, you know, it, it really, it, that averts the whole subject of.
It just takes it and they just go off with another.
But you can still say, this is what we believe. But.
So I'm, I'm reading it right now. So I actually appreciated the, the communication because I think people were wondering what was going on. So it sounds like.
It was the cause, the cold weather, it caused the relay to go bad and it changed out.
The only thing that was missing than what you said is we're still investigating is what I'm hearing. So I think a lot of times when we, when the city doesn't communicate, then everybody's upset about that. So I appreciated the communication because if there's none, then, but, I mean, if you read it, it's pretty accurate. The only thing that's missing to your point is we're still investigating. Otherwise it's, it's pretty well, I mean, I appreciated the explanation. So thank you guys for working on that because it seems to be more of an issue.
We had a minus eighteen, so it takes minus eighteen type air. You're mixing that with water, it freezes. And it sticks about everything inside that system. So things get smaller, reduces the ability of the system to operate. Causes a higher load on the fan and the fan finally said, oh, breaker's set up, we're done. So, so.
How do we, how do we get to, so, so is.
How do you figure?
The root cause is not the weather.
The root cause.
The root cause was the fan.
And right. Cold air comes through an aerator. If you know how an aerator works. And it pulls cold air from outside, mixes with water.
Fail.
It freezes. It causes more resistance, more of a load on the fan, which causes the breaker to trip.
Right, overnight, overnight is a key point. So is there any, is there any upgrade or is there any things we can put on the system for from negative eighteen to negative thirty?
Going to be, yeah. Doc, my, my engineer is whether, you know, we're talking an air handling unit or, yeah, sometimes.
Because negative eighteen, negative twenty does happen with, you know.
Right, over an extended period of time.
At least a few times every five years or maybe every year, you know, right? That's a thing we should expect to encounter here in Iowa. And so.
Yeah, it's just.
Well, then we, the, the idea is throw in a solution and see whether it's acceptable.
Right.
I may think the point.
There are ways to preheat the air. For example, there's units that do that. There's also some other technologies available.
It's just, I, I guess I, I, I am getting center skinned with the, the, the social media and stuff every time we try to do the right thing and explain. And, you know, whether I read it or not, it's like, holy cow, did you see what they said? And anyway, it's just.
Appreciate, I know that was ten o'clock at night, Todd and I were talking about, uh, that sort of thing, uh, the first night. And then Saturday they, Jared was hand mixing, you know, they're, they go into manual mode because now it's, it's outside the realm of the automatic systems and Jared was there and Mike too, they were manning the system to, um, to keep it functioning. So, uh, then, and then, you know, the, when the electrical folks were able to get there, then that lessened the manual effort. So appreciate their, their work. But that was a Friday night and the weekend.
Yeah, because it's, it's snow well when you have H2S and that cause a lot more pull on the chlorine, you use a lot more chlorine. So then you get add chlorine to offset that. Then you gotta, you know, if you need to make room for water, you need to get rid of water. And yeah, so the guys, you know, Friday morning. And, yeah, so the guys, you know, Friday morning, we've got to get rid of water and make room to make the correction and, and then it all takes, you know, time.
And then extra sampling required, just, it's a lot of...
Yeah.
Because you work in a lot of different places.
I was just going to say that, you know, perhaps having an administrator at a place to push out the right information. You know, you've got the mechanical side where they're out there putting in the extra hours, you know, working the weekend and having something else.
Hey, Todd, I, I got phone calls, I saw the social media. I'm, I'm not going to disagree with, with it. The, the, the part that people, when, when they just said cold weather, I mean, we live in Iowa, we get cold. It's been, I mean, I've lived here almost 16 years and it's never happened before. There's people like, I've lived here 30 years, I'm 20 years, I've never... And someone who says said cold weather, oh, it didn't happen the other time or any other year. So obviously there was a root cause, which was the breakers that failed.
So true.
Okay, everybody in town's got fiction about it. I'm on video. Just let it go. Let's move on, let's figure out how to fix it.
And it has happened in the past. We just maybe caught it a little bit earlier or as ever other, you know, a lot, you know...
And it's time to, if you get it, if you get the cold weather in the middle of the tower bell, it's going to make a bigger difference than if it's in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
So there's a difference. And then wind, wind was out south this time.
Yeah. But, yeah, I, I, yeah, I guess, yeah, I apologize to a degree. I am getting pretty thin, thin skin on social media. What, what's been to this town in the last five years is just unexcusable.
Well, I appreciate the staff jumping in and they never complained about showing up and doing what they had to do to go into manual operation, which the plant is an automatic plant, takes a lot of, a lot of man-hours on the system. So when, when people are to show up, I appreciate their help. All right. So now we move on to item number 10.
I only had one other thing.
Okay.
So after we get through budget, things calm down, we get a new administrator. We need to sit down and, I mean, we need to review. I'm sure you got phone calls because of people complaining on social media, whatever the debacle or whatever is going on with the water, by shutting people's waters off with bills and stuff like that. And so if that's something that we need to look at to change, like for people getting notices on their door without, they're only paid, they're off like 50 cents or something like that and they get, you know, whatever the whole debacle, I'm sure you know everything about it. And you don't even need to explain it.
I am not on Facebook.
So it's just something that we need to probably look at to review on how those go out, what time, what, if, what, how much they owe on their bill.
So I'll say our normal practice is that we do not send shut offs for anything less than $50.
So, all right, so...
We are training.
Okay.
And we're going through that process.
So, all right. Just so I can, so that's something we need to review or something like that. Then we can review it later.
Okay. Now looking on to future agenda item discussion.
The only thing I would rather, you already mentioned it in your mayor's report, was just, um, an update or a discussion around what will happen to that staffing situation and our options there. To, yeah, the inspector to replace Jerry's retirement.
Is that item one?
Yeah, but he's not taking any new.
What's 15 or something?
He's not taking any new anymore.
Oh.
Yeah. So I just like to talk about that.
To public input, Brad was not on the agenda. How many questions, three minutes?
My turn. All righty. I'm Andy Jones from the Adkin Savings Bank. First of all, I want to thank you for your business, the bank and the city's business. You've been a long time customer. I appreciate, appreciate your business. I'd like to talk a little bit about the bond funding and the management of those funds, just to let you know what the bank can do. You've already heard what they can do, we can do the same thing. So we can, we can set up accounts, we can manage those accounts again, but money market accounts is for the liquid funds. We could then put funds that are going to be available for a longer period of time into longer-term CDs for it. So, and those rates are going to be around 455, 4.5% right now. I threw a figure out to the gal, she emailed me about where we'd be on a money market account. That is a special money market account that we would set up just for the city. And that would be a negotiated rate. I threw out a rate of 4% to her, but we can negotiate that. So we're a community bank. We're owned by people in this community. We have a little over 40 stockholders, most of them live here in town. So we're here to serve the community and that's what we like to do. And I think we can work together to get you the best return on the, on those bond funds that we possibly can while, while you have access to them. One other thing, we also own an insurance agency. We own Compass Insurance, it's located in Shelbourne. We do insure other communities and areas. So when the insurance policy comes up for bid, we would like an opportunity to bid that. Then one last thing, I'm also the clerk of the township, of Fremont Township. In case you don't know, we are getting very nearly completed on the township hall. It will be done hopefully the end of February. One thing really left to do on it is to refinish the hardwood floor. And then the downstairs is pretty much all done. We've got new restrooms upstairs and downstairs, all handicapped accessible, new lighting, new ceiling, new walls, paint. It, it's, it's, uh, it's really revolutionized and the facility will look nice and will be once again usable for the community beginning here in March. So, yeah, we've been up there, stop in, it's open during the day, you can walk through it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. We'll announce the next regular council meeting, be held February 11th. We do have a special meeting. February 11th, 6:30 PM. With that, we've completed our business for this evening.
Much good, Jerry.
With that, the roll call will be Trevor Bierski.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Samantha Pearson.
Aye.
Jake Bell.
Aye.
Jim King.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. 49 PM.